Good evening, everyone. This Monday, March 31st, 2025, special meeting of the Lake Oswego City Council is now called to order. Ms. Linder, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Buck.
Here.
Councillors Afgham.
Here.
Ndu.
Here.
Wenlin.
Here.
Verdic.
Here.
Corrigan.
Here.
And Rapp.
Here.
Thank you very much. Now, everyone, will you please stand, remove your hats, and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in one soul, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. We know that you are all here because you either care very deeply about this issue, or at least very curious about it. And when we care about things, we can get really passionate about them. The one primary purpose of tonight is for the council to hear from the community. We have received innumerable emails and letters articulating a wide variety of perspectives, so tonight is also a chance for you all to hear from one another. So I'd like to ask that you please listen to one another, of course, with respect and open ears, which means that we listen and we keep our internal thoughts inside. We've always enjoyed the ability to bring folks various perspectives together on challenging topics here in these council chambers to speak. That's, of course, a very important aspect of our democratic process, so I thank all of you for sharing your voices respectfully and for all hearing it likewise with good grace. It's definitely not easy to come up here. And with that, we're going to start with a review of our public comment period by our city attorney, Ms. Osnack.
Thank you, Mayor Buck, members of the council, members of the public. Actually, I'm going to turn to you all, since the public comment is about you all letting council know what you think and feel about the two resolutions that they're considering today. So the way that we'd like to do public comment to make it efficient, fair, and balanced is to set aside 60 minutes total for receiving public comment on these resolutions. We're going to give priority to those people that signed up to testify here in person, and for the benefit of those listening online, I can tell you that there are many, many people in attendance here today, and we're very glad to see all of you. So anyone who does wish to comment, and by commenting, what I mean is coming up here onto this table and speaking to council. If you would like to comment, we would like you to fill out a blue public comment form that's in the back. Along with the public comment forms, we provided frequently asked questions that may address some of the common issues that have come to be questions, considerations for these resolutions, so I would encourage you to look at those, because that may answer, or at least give you some more information and context about these proceedings. But on the form, if you want to comment, you should indicate whether you are in favor, opposed, or neutral on one particular resolution, and that is Resolution 2516. And so Resolution 2516 is a resolution that would authorize me, the city attorney, to file an appeal in the case of Kramer versus City of Lake Oswego at all. There's a second resolution here today that is about the city adopting immediate park rules and coordinating with the multiple other agencies that have jurisdiction to manage public safety and water quality on the lake, and that's the second resolution. But for the purpose of public comment, what we're asking you to do is to indicate whether you are in favor, opposed, or neutral on the issue of the first resolution authorizing me to appeal. And the reason we're asking you to do that is so that we can group your testimony and give fair and balanced representation to all sides on this issue. So if you can do that, that would greatly help Ms. Linder, and I think she has a stack of blue papers right now. But if you'd like to get those in now, I would encourage you to do that if you haven't already. Even though what we're asking you to do is to indicate your support or opposition to the appeal issue, council strongly, strongly encourages and very much wants to hear your opinions on both resolutions. So please don't just limit your testimony to whether or not you think the city should appeal, but please also address the second resolution, your position on it, and whether or not you think that the city should adopt that resolution. I think it probably goes without saying, but it's my job to remind everyone that, as the mayor said, we want everyone here to feel welcome and respected. And so, as is typical for our proceedings, we don't typically have people interrupt, or clap, or be rude to others, and we just ask that you all follow those rules as well, so that we can have a good, productive, and fair hearing today. The way that we're going to divide the 60 minutes is as follows. Council is going to hear up to 25 minutes of testimony for people who are in favor of adoption of the resolution that would authorize me to appeal. Then they're going to hear up to 25 minutes of people who are opposed to the adoption of the appeal resolution. And then we're going to reserve the balance of time, which is at least 10 minutes, for those who indicated they were neutral. We encouraged you all in advance that if there were groups of you that shared a common view, to get together and coordinate your testimony. And so, we are going to hope that you indicated that on your blue forms, and use that information, again, to group the testimony, so that we're getting a fair and balanced representation for council. The time limits are important for you all to know, and that is, it's going to be three minutes per person. And what happens is, when you go up there to testify, you'll see a green light, a yellow light, once you're getting, your time is drawing to a close, and then a red light when your three minutes is up. And we would ask that you immediately conclude your testimony upon seeing the red light, and then, if not, typically, the mayor will gently remind you that the red light means that you need to conclude. The mayor may need to shorten the testimony to two minutes per person, depending on how many blue slips we received. So we'd ask for just a couple of minutes of your grace as we organize your public commenting. And so, right now, it's three minutes, but we may need to reduce it to two, and we'll let you know that very shortly if that has to happen. You can't cede your time to another person. If you're selected to testify, that means that you or the group that you represent, you need to come up and testify for your three minutes. You can't give your time. And we also let everyone know in advance, and I'll just remind everybody now, that really what we're here for is to hear from you, your voice. So we don't have any slides, presentations, PowerPoints, no visuals. We just want to hear from you, using your words. And finally, we recognize there is probably not going to be time for everyone to speak, just looking at the number of you here today. And given that fact, it doesn't mean that if you submitted written testimony, that council has been reviewing, receiving many, many of your written comments. So if you're not called to testify here today, but you submitted written comments, you should feel confident that council is reviewing and taking that into consideration as they vote today. So those are the procedures. And one last thing that I will say is, typically, we have a staff report, but given that there are so many of you here today, and we have a council report, I will be setting the table for all of you with just a couple of words, and then we'll begin public comment after we've selected the groupings. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Osnack. And you all got here in good time and filled out your forms, so Ms. Linder has already sorted them, and I think we're ready to start public comment. I'm going to call up one name, and then someone on deck, so that you're prepared, so we can move through as many people as possible. We're going to start with Catherine Thompson. Like you said, we'll have three minutes. There's lots of enterprising people here. I have this great idea of an invention where the seat actually gradually warms up as you're sitting there, and then at the end of three minutes, it's so hot, you can't possibly sit anymore. You won't have to enter. So if anyone would like to make that a product, I'll give it to you. Okay. Ms. Thompson, thank you for joining us.
Hello, my name is Catherine Thompson. I'm a CPA and on the Finance Committee of the Lake Corporation Board. I belong to two different easements and was an easement president for 13 years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. There are 690 shareholder properties on Lake Oswego and 3,200 easement-eligible properties within the cities. There's 20 easements located around the lake. There are two swim parks that provide citizens' access to the lake. The Lake Oswego Swim Park provides access to about 16,600 households, and the Lake Grove Swim Park provides access to about 3,500 households, and they charge a tax, which is not received by the Lake Corporation or used to fund the Lake Corporation. The Oswego properties and easement household properties provide about one-third of the city's property tax revenues. Home buyers pay a premium when buying a home with deeded access, resulting in higher tax assessments. Yet, none of that is passed on to us, the Lake Corporation. The Lake Corporation has been a good steward of the lake for 80 years. Managing and operating the lake requires a significant financial investment, and it's all funded by its members. The costs exceed $2.5 million per year. The Lake Corporation is run by a voluntary board of directors and committee members. The board employs dedicated staff to run the day-to-day operations. The lake does not return any profits to anyone or any business. Safety is the number-one priority. The Lake Corporation provides rigorous on-and-off safety water programs. Boat owners must have a Lake Oswego Corporation license. They do that by getting one, a written one, and a driving one, along with the state marine board license. Lake Patrol is on the lake from April through October to enforce safety rules and be available to assist boaters and swimmers. Unfortunately, the Lake Patrol has no authority to enforce lake rules with the public. While the Lake Corporation maintains a liability insurance policy, it will not accept liability for the public entering the lake through the city property. Water quality is the second priority to ensure the lake is safe for swimming. Trained staff test the water in multiple locations weekly and maintain a database to spot water quality trends. The Lake Corporation requires boaters to show proof that their boats have been decontaminated to prevent invasive species from entering the lake. Dredging is an expensive and ongoing necessary activity. For example, the Lake Corporation spent close to $1 million during the lake drawdown to remove the sediment and phosphorus that comes in from the Tualatin River and other sources. In addition to dredging, the Lake Corporation spends hundreds of thousands of dollars annually to manage algae, aerate the lake, and treat the water. The Lake Corporation has invested millions of dollars in assets needed to run the lake, such as dams, headgates, fish screens, alum injection systems, a powerhouse, and flume lines. Along with that, they have barges, boats, skiffs, and other equipment. Maintaining the equipment is an ongoing expense. For example, the wooden flume line that carries water from the lake to the hydroelectric plant needs replacing. It's over 100 years old, and the estimated cost is $1.4 million. The Lake Corporation funds all of its needs, which benefits the entire community, by drawing people to visit, shop, and dine, and some people even move here because of it.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Sorry, that's your time. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Patrick Gutierrez, you are up, and then Randy Arthur, you're on deck. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Buck, city council members, and city staff. My name is Patrick Gutierrez, and I'm here as a resident and private citizen. I also happen to be one of the co-chairs of the Parks Board, but as I said, I'm here speaking as a private citizen. As a resident, I urge you not to appeal the court order and the public access to the lake via the park. I believe it's a waste of taxpayers' money and resources. I'm sure you all are aware, at the last Parks Board meeting, all the members who were there voted to recommend the city council that they did not appeal the court's order and the public have access to the lake via the city park. As a private citizen, I would like to urge our distinguished city councillors to take the advice of the Parks Board and the many citizens advocating for public access to the lake. Public access to the lake will offer our citizens valuable opportunities for recreation and access to a beautiful natural resource in the heart of our city. Lastly, I believe a vote to appeal the recent court's decision regarding the public lake access goes against everything the city stands for: inclusiveness, welcoming, diversity, equity. I've only lived here a few years, but what I've experienced in the city has been nothing but kindness, inclusiveness, resilience, I mean, such as neighbors coming together during that horrible ice storm we had two years ago, helping each other, and I've never experienced anything like that in any other place I've lived. This truly is a magnificent city. Thank you all for your time, consideration, and public service.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Mr. Arthur, and then Justin Harnish, you're on deck.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and city councillors. I'm Randy Arthur. I reside on North Shore Road, and I appear before you tonight to discuss the Oswego Lake access litigation and to add to my earlier written comments. Following the trial court's recent opinion and order, plaintiffs told the media that plaintiffs are looking forward to working collaboratively with the city to design reasonable access and to reach a positive solution for all. Moreover, the Lake Oswego Corporation issued a statement that it remains willing to work with all interested parties to try to find a solution that works for everyone. One defendant has already appealed the trial court judgment to seek review by the Oregon Court of Appeals. Accordingly, the city now should act. The city and other parties to the litigation should utilize the Oregon Court of Appeals appellate settlement program to request a suitable stay or pause in the appeal proceedings and deadlines. Working with the Oregon Appellate Court, with the agreement of all parties, including plaintiffs and the Lake Oswego Corporation, the city should establish a seven-member task force to examine and recommend solutions to future lake management, water care, and public access, working with county and state interests as well. Supported by the City of Lake Oswego staff, this new task force should hold public hearings, receive testimony and evidence, and evaluate all key issues connected with lake access. Ultimately, the task force should issue an advisory report containing comprehensive, soundly-vetted recommendations for management and care of lake water, as well as regarding public access. And if the parties to the litigation want to settle the 13-year litigation on mutually acceptable terms, they should consider doing so on terms proposed and recommended by the task force. The Clackamas County Circuit Court has directed us to reimagine Oswego Lake, unburdened by what has been. Accordingly, the task force should address the following questions, among many others: How will public safety, water quality, wildlife protection, and management of the urban lake be paid for going forward? As we all reimagine lake access, in addition to Lower Millennium Plaza, should the Lake Oswego Swim Park and the Lake Grove Swim Park also be designated as safe, suitable access points for members of the public to enter the lake water? To protect water quality, should the public be required to rent properly cleaned and treated watercraft when using the lake, rather than bringing their own? If and when property owners who currently maintain the lake decide they don't want to do so anymore and cease to do so, who will take on responsibility for the public lake? Should Oswego Lake be allowed to become like Blue Lake? If it is a public lake and a public lake bed, should the public now assume responsibility for the lake going forward? The task force I am suggesting would address and answer these and many other lake-related questions. We look to you, the city council, to be the adult in the room and to lead us forward on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur. Justin, Mr. Harnish, and then Kim Vito, you're on deck. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Justin Harnish, and I am the sitting president of the Lake Corporation, and I've been on the board for over a decade. Prior to the lawsuit, the Lake Corporation abstained from endorsing candidates. Due to the historical importance of the partnership between the city and the Lake Corp, the Lake Corp decided years ago to interview candidates who were running for city council and for mayor. I was personally involved in many of those interviews. The Lake Corp later decided not to endorse, but instead published the candidates' answers for our shareholders to make their own decision. Recently, I went into the Lake Oswego or Lake Corp's archives, and these are the answers that I found. Ms. N, when you were interviewed, you so eloquently said, "I do not support broader access, because I believe there are multiple environmental safety and congestion concerns that would arise." You continued with, "The city and the Lake Corp have to work together. It really is that simple, and I will bring that to the council." Mayor Buck, you were asked, "Please describe how Lake Oswego fits into these priorities and to your long-term vision." I'll take an excerpt. "The lake amplifies the value of properties surrounding it, which has increased our tax base in Lake Oswego over the years, and enabled the city to pursue programs and improvements it may not have been otherwise able to achieve. Even if one does not directly enjoy the lake, we all enjoy the secondary benefits." Another question to Mayor Buck. "Do you support open access?" "I support keeping Oswego Lake as it is with the current easements provided. I value the money and the efforts the Lake Corp puts into maintaining the lake and its facilities. Since the public does not pay to maintain this resource, I do not believe full public access is appropriate." Do you, another question to Buck. "Do you support the continuation of management of the Lake Corporation?" Another excerpt. "This resource adds value to the community, and the fact that the community at large does not have to shoulder the costs associated with its maintenance is an even further benefit to us all." Years later, the candidate interview process turned into a candidate forum. Councillors Verdic, Afgham, and Corrigan were, when asked about lake access, you used the term "status quo," which means you were all in support of the lake as it was, and you told that to our shareholders. As you can hear from this, that is your response. It is important to note that the, that the city has, that people who have access to the lake number 4,000 households, which is nearly 15,000 citizens, which equates to nearly one-third or 33% of the population of Lake Oswego. Mr. Prager is merely one citizen of Lake Oswego. His attorneys are not citizens of Lake Oswego, and I am sure there are a few living among us who support the plaintiff's views. But I know for a fact that those who do not support the plaintiff's views far outnumber them. As you recall, so, that's what I'm here for tonight, and we're here for tonight, is to be represented by you, our elected officials, who once asked for our endorsement as the Lake Corporation and our votes as citizens by honestly answering our questions. You valued our partnership then just as much as you value it now, and the Lake Corporation feels the same way. Let's not give up now. We've come a long way.
Thank you, Mr. Harnish. Ms. To. Ms. To, and then Anastasia Roderick, you're on deck.
While Ms. To is coming up, I'm just going to remind all of you, I know it's difficult, particularly when you strongly agree with something, but we'd really appreciate it if you could keep the audible indications of your support to a minimum.
Thank you, Ms. Osnack. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Buck, and members of the council and city staff. My name is Kim Vito, and I'm a resident here in Lake Oswego, and I'm here tonight representing ELO for Love, which is a local nonprofit trying to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in our city. So I'm going to read our statement. "On behalf of the Board of Directors of ELO for Love, we urge the City of Lake Oswego to discontinue its ongoing legal efforts to limit public access to Oswego Lake. The continuation of this costly legal battle not only diverts valuable public funds and resources, but also delays the necessary transition toward improved public access and safety measures around the lake. The history of exclusion in our community was not established overnight, and nor will its transformation into a more inclusive and just future. However, the meaningful progress requires decisive action. Concerns about safety are valid and should be addressed, but these challenges are neither new nor insurmountable. Cities across the nation regularly implement reasonable regulations to maintain public safety in shared spaces. Lake Oswego is no exception and has the capacity to do the same. Continuing to appeal and delay this inevitable transition is fiscally irresponsible and does a disservice to our residents, who deserve to see their tax dollars allocated toward initiatives that propel our city forward, rather than uphold outdated and exclusionary policies. We stand at a defining moment for our community. Oswego Lake represents more than a body of water. It is a symbol of our collective values and the kind of city we strive to be. By choosing to open the lake to public access- By choosing to open the lake to public access, we take a crucial step in rectifying past injustices and fostering a more welcoming and equitable community. We urge you to reconsider the current approach, end the litigation, and initiate the necessary steps to open Oswego Lake at Millennium Plaza Park. The time has come to align our policies with the values of inclusivity, fairness, and responsible stewardship of public resources. Together, we can create a more just and united Lake Oswego for all. And to address the city attorney's request about the two resolutions, our board would recommend that the city not appeal, and also, as to the second resolution, we would recommend that the board work with the appropriate public and private agencies to adopt rules to transition to the lake for safe public access. Thank you so much."
Thank you, Ms. Toh. Ms. Roderick, and then on deck is Jeff Edelson. Hi.
Hello. I am a member of the community. I'm humbled to be here. I just found out about this meeting an hour ago, and I felt I needed to speak. I've lived in this community over 25 years, been a member of two easements, and...
Yes, just...
Oh.
There we go.
Hi. I've lived in, my name is Anastasia Roderick. I've lived in this community over 25 years. I've been a member of two easements. And most importantly, I think my daughter has been a lifeguard at the swim park, and last year she was head lifeguard. And so I am neutral on this issue because, first, I want to express that I really want to honor Judge Steele's opinion, out of respect for her. I know it's one of the last decisions that she made in her career, and I think that's significant to consider. And also, I'd like to point out that entering through the bay has never been a thing, ever. Like, nobody has ever done that. And there's a lot of things about this public access situation that is quite shocking because, obviously, nobody has the right to put a boat in without sanitizing it. Nobody has a right to be on the lake without following the rules and having the license, and we've, it's not part of the culture. And also, as a person who's had a license and has driven the boat, it's a little bit of a disappointment in terms of the beauty of Oregon's nature. It's really a bunch of homes. It's like a home tour every time you go out, and I think it's really disrespectful to think that that's appropriate to, to the security of our citizens, to open that up, when my daughter's job at the lake park with the, with what used to be public access when she was a child, I didn't even know there was a meeting in 2012 that closed it. So I kept telling people, "Oh, take the bus out to, to Lake Oswego and jump in the lake in the summer," you know, kids. You know, I used to do that. I used to go to Lewis and Clark and jump in the pool in the summer on the bus sometimes. And it's, it's, it's like part of the people who are for opening it up. It's, it's, it's possible. I think there's a, a middle way where we can open up the Lake Oswego Swim Park, because she had no customers many days in a row. And we have to show our ID now when we go to the swim park. I was shocked. I didn't even know. I'm her mom, of course I get in, but, and I know, I'm really proud to say that she has banned people from that swim park for inappropriate behavior. My child, so, and she grew up in the lake, and her name is Veronica Roderick, so that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, Ms. Roderick. Thank you. Mr. Edelson, and Terry Bianco, you're on deck. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Edelson. I'm a lawyer and I'm a mediator. I work at the firm in Markowitz-Hirbold in Portland. I'm a resident of Lake Oswego, but I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Lake Oswego Corporation, and I speak on behalf of the board tonight. I thank you for giving me the opportunity. I, you know, I, I speak from the perspective of coming to this, this council as a longtime partner with the council. The council, past and present, councilors have been supportive of the Lake Oswego Corporation and what it is that we do for the lake and for the community. And I, I speak, obviously, in favor of the resolution 2516. And let me explain why I think, from a legal perspective, an appeal from the city is a necessity, and I have 10 reasons. So I have a top 10 list. I hope you'll give me a chance to go through it. Some, people have covered some of them, so I won't be too repetitive. First thing is, this is a case of significant importance in this community and in the state at large. It's not just Lake Oswego, but to cities, municipalities, counties, governmental entities, all throughout Oregon. In my opinion, which by the way is the same as your, the opinion of the city's lawyers that they argued in court, is that the court applied the wrong legal standard in this case. The court substituted the judgment of an advisory jury of laypeople for the judgment and wisdom of this city council. The court ruled that the city was wrong to consider such things as budgetary limitations, the fragility of the lake ecosystem, preservation of the natural environment, the difficulty and expense of meeting ADA requirements, the potential trespass on private property, its existing building codes, traffic considerations, and public safety. And if the courts can second-guess this council on decisions that are as complex as this, what role is left for all of you? And I think that's what, I, I hope you'll all think about. It's seriously, and, and when you do develop new rules that the court has said, you know, immediately we have to do something, we've heard people talk about that we have to have rules, we know, we know, they're not going to be good enough for the plaintiffs, and we're going to see another lawsuit. We can't give up this fight. Second, the court imposed the wrong remedy. Even if you accept the court's decision as being right on public access, on the public trust doctrine and so forth, it applied the wrong remedy. Rather than holding a hearing, the court imposed arbitrary deadlines that are literally impossible to achieve and utterly failed to impose any limits to protect public safety. Allowing immediate public access, which is what the court did, without giving the city, the Oregon Marine Board, adequate time to promulgate necessary safety rules borders on irresponsibility. Requiring the city to move boulders from the water without adequate time to obtain division of land permits and to comply with federal Clean Water Act standards was reckless, and that's precisely why...
Sorry, Mr. Edelson, that's your time. Thank you very much.
That was only two.
Gosh, I know. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Terry Bianco, you're next, and then Ken Studerbaker, you're on deck.
Hi, Ms., hi, Ms. Bianco.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tara Bianco. I've lived in the Glenmorey neighborhood for 22 years. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today on the resolutions before council. I would like to state my opposition to Resolution 2516. No additional tax dollars should be spent denying or delaying lawful public access as determined by the courts to Oswego Lake. Over the past few weeks, I have spoken with lakefront property owners and read letters to the editor and social media posts on the subject of Oswego Lake access. There seem to be a few predominant themes expressed by those who oppose opening the lake: safety, the financial burden of property owners in maintaining the lake, and exclusivity. It's quite reasonable for the current homeowners to feel it would be unfair for the entire financial burden of lake maintenance to remain on them if the lake were to become public. And we should try to ensure that those who use the lake are at least as safe as those who access the Willamette River, which is a well-utilized, moving body of water from a public property such as George Rogers Park. I'm currently completing my second term on the Transportation Advisory Board, with two years served as chair, and as the tab liaison with the Parks 2040 Project. And I've served for several years as a Glenmorey Neighborhood Association Board Member, though I'm speaking only for myself tonight. These experiences have shown me how our city leaders, our staff, and engaged community members can come together in good faith to solve problems creatively and fairly. Therefore, I support Resolution 2518 and encourage council to adopt it. If we're going to expend any more city resources, whether that be dollars or staff, on this situation, I would like it to be in moving forward and finding some solutions, not continuing to oppose access in the courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bianco.
I'll give you some minutes back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Studerbaker, and then Teresa Spangler, you're on deck.
Good evening. Go ahead.
When does the clock start?
Go ahead. Yeah, we start.
Well, I'm here to oppose the closure of, excuse me, I'm here to say go ahead with the appeal to the court, and there's basically three reasons. One is safety, the other, second is cost, and the third is the lake quality of water. The Lake Board has done a wonderful job of taking care of the lake and spending substantial money. That's fine, but it's going to take money to sustain that. So if you allow the public in, the public is going to have to pay for that. At least, it seems like in fairness, that should be done. As far as safety goes, the Lake Patrol does not have the authority to do anything to somebody who's violating their rules. So it gives them free, free rein on how to operate there, which is not exactly a safe way for them to go. And finally, the cost, if, somebody's going to have to pay if, if the lake continues to be open to the public, it's appropriate that they should be paying, the lakes should be, no, excuse me, the city should be making their share of the cost of that, because it's not cheap. And also, finally, I think there's a good chance that the home valuations will go down as a result of included public access. And in that case, you're going to have to come up with more money for the rest of it, for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Studerbaker.
Well, thank you, Mr. Buck.
Good to have you here.
Mayor Buck.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Spangler, and then Howard Cumberland, you're on deck. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Buck and council members. I'm Teresa Spangler. I'm here tonight in opposition of continuing any further lawsuits in regards to public access. I'm pleased to see the list you brought here and the other measure that you'll vote on this evening to allow other entities to help you form safe and reasonable standards for allowing more people into the lake. I have every confidence that you can use modern technology to perhaps have reservation systems to limit the access. I don't think this is going to be as overwhelming as some of the opponents say to allow just that small portion of the lake to have some public access. I hope that you'll ignore some of the vitriol that you've heard around town from people that, I've really been embarrassed by some of their comments, that they're saying that the wrong element is going to come into Lake Oswego if they can use the lake. Our public parks are shared with people from throughout the Portland community. People can swim right now at George Rogers Park. They fill both Westlake and Foothills Park every summer for the concerts, and I haven't seen a crime wave follow those crowds that come to our town. I think we can come up with some reasonable solutions. I've led my HOA, I've chaired the Oak Creek Neighborhood Association for 10 years, and never has the city council approved a million dollars to finance my community. I pay taxes for the lake park and for the, the school district's lake park, but I can't even take a canoe out on the lake. I applaud anything that would allow reasonable access. I think we can do it. I think it's time to embrace the court's ruling and to move forward to allow more access for all. I hear what people are saying that they, and I appreciate the time and energy and investment that the Lake Corporation has put into the lake. They've been fine stewards, but I grew up in the Seattle area, grew up near Lakes of Mammoth. We, there, we owned our dock, and there were public parks on that lake, and I tell you, the property values continue to soar. And keep in mind, Bill Gates lives on Lake Washington, and there are many public parks, and people can ride by his home on a boat, and I don't think that made him move. So I appreciate your time, and I, I think it's great that you've allowed people on both sides of this issue to come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Spangler. Mr. Cumberland, and then Jim Meyer, you're on deck.
Thank you, Mayor Buck and council members. I speak in favor of restricting and going forward with the appeal. My name is Howard Cumberland. I live at 4212 Lakeview Boulevard on West Bay. I've been a resident since 2006. I have a master's degree in marine biology, and I have an in-depth understanding of water quality, invasive species effects on humans and natural habitats. I have worked on water quality issues to reduce the impacts of harmful algae blooms, urban contaminants, and invasive species in lakes, rivers, and ocean bays and harbors throughout the United States. I'm here to share why, from a water quality perspective, it is in our best interest to appeal the court's questionable decision in this case. Oswego Lake is a crown jewel to our entire community. It takes a lot of work and investment for it to be as healthy as it is. As an urban lake, it is subject to many stressors. It is critical that Oswego Lake receive intensive water quality management to control the phosphorus, the harmful algae blooms that, from occurring, and protect against invasive species. For more than 80 years, the Lake Oswego Corporation has been charged with reducing the impacts from phosphorus and other nutrients that lead to harmful algae blooms. Water quality management is done through diligent and consistent testing and treatment throughout, through aeration, multiple alum applications each year. In all, the Lake Oswego Corporation invests more than $450,000 a year in water quality maintenance and have dedicated internal and external staff to handle this effort. These costs are covered entirely by the shareholders and easement members of the Lake Oswego Corporation. Without this investment, the lake would routinely be dominated by cyanobacteria, which are the harmful algae blooms, and would not be usable, not only by humans, but it'd also not be a viable habitat in fish and avian wildlife that we enjoy so much in the city. The management of all the stormwater inputs and the lake water is important to not have a stagnant, unusable lake that would not be the crown jewel that it is. It would not be a gathering point that makes Lake Oswego the place to live. There are seven Class I and II perennial streams entering the lake from the watershed. There are nine unclassified streams and 96 stormwater outfalls between 8-inch and 36-inch diameter, directly entering the lake from streets and neighborhoods. We direct our alum injection systems to treat these point sources and use large-scale alum surface applications to control the growth of cyanobacteria or the harmful algae blooms. The city knows the importance of managing stormwater runoff that contains nutrients and contaminants, and they know that it's very important to maintain the health of Oswego Lake, the Willamette River, and the Tuallaton River. In fact, the city has earmarked at least $8 million to divert or clean up pollutants from runoff entering Oswego Lake at over 60 city-controlled access points as part of the city's stormwater management program to reduce stormwater impacts. If the lake becomes open to the public, does that mean the city is going to assume all of these operations and expenditures, employ the internal staff and external consultants, and take over the full-time management of the lake? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cumberland. We appreciate your comments. Jim Meyer, you are up, and then Jeremy Langiers, you are on deck.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. My name is Jim Meyer, and I am here to support the, the idea of not, not appealing, and in support of coming up with reasonable rules and regulations to, to help manage the lake. I empathize with those of my neighbors that live on the lake. I can't imagine how this change will impact them. They invested in their homes and in the easements, and I, I get that, and I've learned a lot from those who have spoken about what has gone into supporting the lake. But I want to speak to the idea of access. I've taught environmental outdoor education for 26 years, focusing a lot on those who did not have access to nature. And when someone gets access, the, the impact is powerful. I really, truly believe in the, the power, the minds, and the hearts of this city and the people that work in the city and the people that live here. I think we can come together. I like the idea of the, the task force to just, just go forward, and if, if all this really comes down to ultimately a judge's decision, whether we appeal or not, and arguments can be made on both sides. We need to, to plan for if this happens, and I encourage those that live on the lake that if it, if the lake becomes one that is for all of us... that if it, if the lake becomes one that is for all of us, to just assume the best in all of us, that we can come together and reasonably work together on, on this, on this issue. And I appreciate what the president of Lake Corp said in regards to the responses you all given in the past, but I also remind us that as human beings, we're able to change our mind, too. We're presented with reasonable arguments, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Sir, how do you say your last name?
Langers.
Langers. Sorry, I think I butchered it. Good to have you here. And Michelle Morales, you're on deck. Please, go ahead, sir.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Jeremy Langers, and I'm in favor of the resolution to appeal. We have raised a family in the Evergreen neighborhood for 25 years. We are members of the Lakewood Bay Community Club where I serve as president. I've also been a dedicated Lakewood Fire Department member for the past 27 years. Uh, I'm also with our water rescue team and county-wide water rescue consortium. I'm here to read a testimonial from a longtime resident of Lake Oswego that is relative to the overall safety of all lake users. This is from Nancy Kleintong. My name is Nancy Kleintong, and I'm sorry I cannot be in person tonight. I had the joyful privilege of growing up on this Oswego Lake and then returning as an adult to raise my family here. I swim almost every day during the summer, and I love this place and community. However, I am greatly concerned about lake safety as we welcome more people onto the water. On the 4th of July, when I was 17 and a recent graduate of Lake Ridge High School, I witnessed a horrific accident that forever changed my life. I was sitting with a friend on our floating dock about 18 feet from our shore when a powerboat sped in and accidentally ran over a swimmer who was about six feet away from us. Neighbors and friends jumped in and tried to save him, but he died almost instantly. It all happened incredibly fast. Memories haunt me to this day, and I can only imagine the pain his family suffers. This, this event changed my life plans, and I became a nurse. After this tragedy, Lake Oswego Corporation added many more safety rules, adding more buoys at 100 feet from the shoreline around the lake perimeter, setting a speed limit, raising the age to get a boating license, and reinforcing the rule that swimmers must stay inside the buoy line. Over the years, more safety rules have been added. Boats with skiers in the waters must raise an orange flag so others know that there's someone in the water. Boat cannot cruise inside the shoreline, inside the buoys. Non-powered water craft must stay inside the buoys except when directly crossing the lake. People using non-powered craft must wear or carry life jackets and wear bright safety vests. Everyone 12 and under always wear a life jacket when in a boat, and many other rules are in place to keep all users safe. These rules are a great help, but there are many more and bigger powerboats on the lake, and I still see swimmers out too far or boats in too close, and I actually shake when I see this and try to call out to them and educate them. I fear that bringing more people onto the lake will bring another tragedy, especially if they're unaware of the rules. I find it hard to imagine that any, this could be in any way safe. How the city regulates access to intru, how will the city, excuse me, access to, excuse me, how will the city regulate access to ensure the safety of all lake users, and how will this be enforced? I urge you please to carefully prioritize safety. Thank you. Mayor, council, thank you for listening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you being here. Ms. Morales, and then James Mallon, you are on deck. Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide this public comment. My name is Michelle Morales. I'd like to start by talking to the many science majors in this room. What those who have studied biology know well is that living organisms are by design open systems. Whether they are mammals taking in air or bodies of water replete with life from the invisible microorganisms to the birds that grace us with their migrations, we know that a closed ecosystem does not survive. In all of the discourse about what opening up the lake might cause to be lost, I wonder if we are forgetting the good that opening may make possible. And here I am thinking about values, reputation, and economics. Small businesses downtown need tourists. A day on the lake followed by ice cream, shopping for that July birthday, a special family lunch out. Healthy ecosystems are vibrant, full of vitality of all variations, the life force that attracts economy. Which brings me to the second reason, and that is to cultivate joy. Black joy, white joy, people's joy through connection with nature. People come to nature, or from my worldview to God's creation, to take in life. No 401K required. "This morning I walked along a lakeshore and fell in love with a wren," says former poet laureate Billy Collins. With our collective nervous systems so misattuned to fear, we need nature to be accessible like breath. Quote, "When you consider the radiance," says poet A.R. Ammons. "When you consider the radiance that it does not withhold itself, but pours its abundance without selection into every nook and cranny." We are already naturally a part of that radiance. Let us lean into that light the very best that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Mr. Maitland, and then Stephen Beckham, you're on deck. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council. Uh, good evening, mayor. Uh, my name is James Maitland. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am in favor of the adoption of the resolution 2516. I'm here to express my deep concern regarding Judge Steele's ruling and to urge the city to take immediate action to protect Oswego Lake. I urge you to appeal Judge Steele's ruling and to file an immediate motion to stay the court order of public access to Oswego Lake. This action will halt enforcement while you pursue the appeal, giving time for a proper and thorough review. Now, this is the time for you, our community leaders and representatives, to act decisively to preserve Oswego Lake. I moved 3,000 miles across the country to be closer to my wife's family, bringing our two young children with us. We chose to settle in Lake Oswego because of what it offers its residents: top-rated public schools, a strong sense of community, and access to the lake. I specifically sought a home with deeded easement rights to ensure my family could enjoy the lake. Having spent my entire career in the maritime industry, time on the water with my family is incredibly important to me. This ruling poses a significant threat to the property values of homes with deeded easement access within the bay. These easements are not merely a convenience; they represent a substantial financial investment and a key component of our property rights. It is essential to uphold the proper procedures and rules governing the lake for the benefit of our community. Opening the lake to public access poses several risks, including the introduction of invasive species and waterway safety concerns, as we've heard. On March 14th, 2025, an incident occurred involving an electric-powered fishing boat operated by a 17-year-old who was unlicensed and did not possess an Oregon State Marine Board boater education card. The boat had been out of registration for two years in Oregon and did not have several required safety items: life jacket, sound equipment, a horn or whistle, or a Type 4 throwable flotation device, and the operator was unaware of tragic traffic flow regulations. When questioned, the operator stated, and I quote, "I had no idea I needed this stuff and thought the lake was public, so I could go out with whatever I had. Even with my years of boating experience, the licensing process for both Oregon State and Lake Oswego required significant effort. This reinforces the need for strict adherence to the local regulations that ensure safe lake operation. The city has a responsibility to protect our community's interests and the character of Oswego Lake. The Lake Corps should not stand alone in this appeal. I encourage you, Mr. Mayor and counselors, to take action and appeal this decision. We need a long-term solution that balances public access and with preserving Oswego Lake's unique characteristics and the safety of its residents. This is a crucial moment of our community. Your decisive action is vital. Thank you for your service."
Thank you, Mr. Maitland. Mr. Beckham, you are up, and then Helen Leek, you're on deck.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Stephen Dow Beckham. I've resided in Lake Oswego for 48 years. I've never swam, fished, canoed, kayaked, or boated on Oswego Lake. Since 1979, I have served as an expert witness in 42 federal and state court cases, including 10 involving the navigability and public use of waters in the state of Oregon. On February 14, 1859, Sucker Lake, now known as Oswego Lake, became the property of the citizens of the state of Oregon. It was determined to be a navigable waterway, as was the Willamette River, when Butler Ives subdivided this township. He mounted meander surveys of two navigable waterways, the river and the lake. Between 1878 and 1973, at least 26 people have drowned in Oswego Lake. Two were from Oswego. One was from near Oswego, and 23 were from other locations, fully identified in the newspaper. They were the public users of a public body of water. The state has repeatedly exercised its authority over the lake that it owns. In the 1890s, the Oregon Fish Commission started stocking the lake. It planted 3,000 fish from the Cocomis Hattery in 1898. It planted 5,000 fish in 1904. In the 1920s, the State Board of Health began mosquito control in the lake to prevent malaria. In 1922, the Oregon Public Utility Commission and its authority over the lake held hearings for the Oswego Lake and booming company about using the lake as a log pond. There are over 400 pages of public testimony about the public water administered by the state. On June 30, 2008, the city of Lake Oswego purchased a sewer easement for $53,309.57 from the owner of the lake, the state of Oregon. The easement ran the length of the lake and up three lateral arms. Alex D. McIntyre, the city manager, signed that notarized document. Article 3 of the easement, a legal document, reads, "The easement area shall remain open for the public recreational and other non-proprietary uses unless restricted or closed to public entry by the state land board." To my knowledge, the state land board has never closed recreation in the public waters of Oswego Lake. It is time for the city government to cease spending public funds for the exclusive benefit of the members of the Lake Corporation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Beckham, that's your time. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I trust that members of the council have the document.
Okay, well, if you share it with us, we will have it. Thank you very much. Hi, Ms. Leek. And then Bruce Pointset, you are on deck.
Council, mayor, thank you for listening to my few comments. Most of everything I wanted to say has already been said. I think that Randy Arthur's comments about putting together a collaborative committee to oversee any possible use of the lake is, is foremost, and I think we're putting the cart before the horse, you know, voting for, you know, having the, the city manager put together time, place, and manner use of the lake. I am all for going forward with the legal process to appeal this decision. I think what no one has talked about is the liability the city is opening itself up to with opening the lake to the public. It will, the legal suits that will happen because people are careless and will find deep pockets to blame will pale in comparison to the legal fees we will spend going forward to litigate this issue. And that, and when we do a time, place, and manner, you know that that will get litigated also, because will we allow the tour bus from Rhodes Scholar to pull up with, you know, 30 kayaks and paddleboards and someone with a loudspeaker, and we're going to take a tour of the lake today, and, you know, off they go? Is this what the public, I mean, that's what could happen unless we regulate it and, and put parameters on it, which I think will be controversial to the people who want the lake open to the public. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Leek. Good to see you. Mr. Pointset, come on down, and then Lena Vance, you're on deck.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Bruce Pointset. I'm here representing respond to racism in Lake Oswego, and I'm speaking in opposition to the appeal. Among other things, our community is very concerned about some of the classist tropes that have come up in the public comments, such as this idea of the wrong element, and I'd be remiss to point out that we're not that far removed from a person leading a Cadillac converter ring that was terrorizing the metro area, who was a homeowner on the lake. Opening up access to the lake would not just be a symbolic gesture towards making LO more inclusive, it would tangibly increase tourism and outdoor recreation activities, as well as increase opportunities to residents of LO to collaborate with community members from outside the city. To put it simply, it would create opportunities where many may not realize they exist. For nearly a decade now, orgs like ours and LO for Love have been demonstrating the potential of these untapped opportunities. Conversely, putting time and resources towards an appeal to keep the lake private only furthers the city's ugly history, which includes having explicitly racist language in housing deeds and waste more taxpayer dollars on, as the city is already strained by budget cuts. I've heard concerns from some that opening access to the lake would increase cost for homeowners, so it seems as if the decision is really about what people are choosing to spend their money on. On one side is the opportunity to put some action behind the inclusive language we've incorporated into the city and change some of these exclusionary classist perceptions that have dogged LO. The other side is spending that money to maintain the status quo and make it clear that LO isn't a welcoming community for all, not just in words, but in actions. As someone who grew up here and experienced intense isolation and now works here dealing with students still experiencing the same intense isolation, the work of making LO more inclusive is very personal for me. In fact, on the side of this very building sits a mural titled Miss Willie's Dream. It depicts the founder of our organization, Willie Pointset's dream of an LO where children of all races are thriving and playing together, and on that mural, they're playing in the water. Many in this community are inspired by this vision for change, and we have the opportunity now to put action behind it. The ruling to make Lake Oswego, or to make Oswego Lake public was a transformative step for LO, and I urge you not to bend to pressure to go backwards. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pointset. Ms. Vance, you are up, and then Tom Berish, you're on deck. Oh, I'm sorry, what was that? Oh, oh, okay, all right. Then please, Mr. Berish.
Good evening. Hi. Yeah, I'm here to, uh, my name's Tom Berish. I've lived in Lake Oswego for 25 years. I've been kayaking since 1980 on over 100 bodies of water in the United States. On all of them, I entered them from legal access points, and on all of them, I obeyed the rules that were set to protect the resource and to protect the nearby landowners. Some lakes I didn't kayak on because boating is prohibited. But the one closest to me, boating is prohibited for some people, but not for others. So I've never kayaked on this, although lots of other people take boats. To me, that's patently unfair. If the city makes the rules, and I think it should, they could either let everybody go, or they could let no one boat on the lake. And that would be good, because if these zebra mussels are that big of a problem, then nobody should be taking boats there. So, uh, that's what I think should happen, so I'm against appealing this, and I think the city should make the rules regarding access. Maybe no one should go there, or maybe motorboats shouldn't go there since I wasn't aware they had chopped up a swimmer. That's disgusting. But, um, the rules should apply to everybody, not just the select few. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berish. And then we have time for one more, and it's Liz Gage, Ms. Gage.
Hi, yes, Ethan Wood. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the work you're doing. I know it's difficult. I really come at this as a, I live on North Shore, and the, but I grew up on the lake. I've been here for 70 years. I've been here for 70 years. And my family's invested more than $100,000 to help support the lake over the years. I am worried mostly... The first thing that came to mind when I knew what was coming up was the safety because, like, people have talked about accidents. I got hit by a boat when I was a kid. But it's... We have done so much to control that and help that. We have... Mr. Edelson was talking about a number of things I wish he could have continued. I would have given him my spot. But it's really concerning to me, the safety things that can happen. Even now, with so many boats on the lake, I'm not... Honestly, I have no problem having the lake have opportunities for people, more people, to be on it. But I am very concerned about the ecology of the lake. I'm concerned about... I think there's 19 states that have made it... You have to have your boat washed and cleaned before it can come on the lake. Lake Corporation requires our boat owners to... If we take our motorboat off the lake, it has to get sterilized to come back on. And/or it has to be tagged out so it was... You know it was never on another body of water. I'm worried about that. I'm worried about the financial impact to me. I'm a single woman trying to stay where I live. And I'm worried about... My taxes are enormous, which is great because that means I have a great house value. However, I have to die to get the money back because I don't plan to sell. If we... If people are... I am worried about the financial impact of if we have safety problems and we have ecology problems on the lake. If my house loses a dramatic value or what's that going to do to our school system? The taxes that we get? What is it going to do to the city of Lake Oswego? It's going to change the tax? We derive so much tax from the properties that are around and surrounding the lake. I think one easement owner brought that up. You know, he paid for his house knowing it had the value of the taxes. Excuse me. Knowing it had the value for... Finish that for me, Joe.
We know what you mean.
Yeah. Anyway, I'm going to stop talking because...
Your time is up.
I've said enough. Thank you. And I am for the city supporting the appeal.
Thank you, Ms. Gage. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for public comments, all of you who came. Sorry for those of you for there was not time. But we do have... We have received many comments, as I mentioned earlier, and they have all been posted to the city's website. Are they on the agenda page for this meeting? Is that where we put them? Yeah, okay. If you look for this meeting on the city's website, we posted all the comments. Yeah. So if you're interested, they are there. Colleagues, now's the chance for us to ask questions. If anyone has questions of Ms. Bennett or Ms. Osnack, now's the opportunity. Any questions? No one has questions? No questions? Ally, you don't have five questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any questions.
My gosh. Okay. And in that case, let's move to deliberation. Would someone like to make a motion on Resolution 2516? We're just going to consider it. Counselor Raff?
I'm moving to make a motion for Resolution 2516 for the city to...
Just move to adopt.
I move to adopt Resolution 2516. Thank you, Mayor.
You're Counselor Raff. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Raff.
Or do we have to do both? Are we doing sequentially or...
One at a time, yes. Thanks, Counselor. I've been seconded by Counselor Woodland. Yeah, Counselor Raff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We certainly have a complicated and complex situation behind... before us. I have been trying to break this down for myself in order to understand it. And to progress, I needed to learn the history. The history of a man-made lake that has become a man-made urban lake that we're all enjoying. I have certainly been conflicted on this issue. I respect the private property ownership rights. But if that right has been built on perhaps illegal terms, do those rights still need to be honored? One thing that I know is having a public access to the lake is not going to fix the past racism, the economic class, the diversity. But at the same time, concluding from many conversations with all perspectives, I now see a little bit of truth in every perspective. For example, somebody sold the shareholders, Lake Oswego Corporation shareholders, a private lake. They just want what they bought. They want that right. Racist and discriminatory covenants, not the current shareholders' faults, they were in place... They were put in place in 1913. Mostly, Caswigo Corporation shareholders work hard to be able to buy a property on the lake. These are people who volunteer their time to serve, donate money to our schools and our community. They are good people. The people who want access to the lake are good people. They don't mean any harms. They don't get up in the morning and say, "Let's go on the lake," and screw it up. I have found most everyone to be good people. For those of you who saw Lake Caswigo back in 80s, you do remember what downtown looked like. And for those who didn't see it then, it was a sleepy, old, and tiring suburban downtown. There were buildings blocking the view to the lake. Thanks to many visionaries and city leaders who created a beautiful, vibrant, and destination in Lake Oswego. A big thank you. You had a great idea. We have a beautiful downtown because of you. But somehow, this great idea, for whatever principle, has turned into a situation that now is dividing our community. That is sad for me, a divided community. We also need to say the truth and correct some misperceptions. The lake that we look at today was developed by private funding and has been maintained by private funding. So when people say, "I want access to the lake because my tax money is paying for it," for your information, it is not your tax money. As you heard today, the total annual cost is $2.5 million for Lake Caswigo Corporation. About $1 million of that goes towards safety and quality of the water. $1 million. And at the same time, city pays shy of $9,000 annually for frontage fees. $9,000 and $1 million, there is a big gap. It is not our tax money that keeps the Lake Oswego this beautiful. When people say the lake is public, for your information, based on Judge Steele's judgment, only the water in the lake is public. The bottom of the lake, the banks, the easements are all private property. Unlike George Rogers Park, which everything is public, in this case, there are three owners and many authorities who have jurisdiction over it now. It causes so many unanswered questions. When people say the city has wasted taxpayers' money for litigation, for your information, back in 2012, the city was stuck between the rock and the hard place. The city leaders who envisioned our current downtown, who bought these properties, did it for the Lakeview Parks. Lakeview Parks. It was not for Lake Access Parks. So the city council back in 2012 stood up for integrity, the purpose and the intent for which these properties were purchased. At that time, it was the only thing to do. When people say the Lake Caswigo Corporation had racially restricted covenants, you mean a state of Oregon had laws that were racist and discriminatory? Enough of this rhetoric. If you would like to keep talking about this topic and keep this topic alive, please talk about the history of state of Oregon and the history of United States of America. Let's not stick this one just to Lake Caswigo. I have received feedback through various channels, emails, texts, phone calls, one-on-ones, meetings, lunches, coffees, met with other mayors, other city councilors. And the majority of people had similar opinion. And I also agree with them. Most everyone wants to keep the beauty of this lake and are concerned with safety rules, crowding, and injuries. Security for all, those who live on the lake and those who come and use the lake. So when their cars are parked in the public parking, they don't get vandalized. Environmental impact, water quality, and finally, equity. And everyone now understands that the water is judged to be public. And the city owns a lakefront property with a narrow access to the water at a very small park. And that this area was never designed to be an access to the lake. You can see how I've been conflicted. If tonight we decide not to appeal, then there must be a plan and a most stringent one allowed by the law for time, place, and manner. If we don't, then we all lose. My ask of all Lake Caswigo residents is that let's not allow this issue to divide us any longer. Let's learn from the past on both sides. Let it unite us. And let's make the lake a positive symbol for our community and our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Afghan. Counselor Raff?
I'm surprised I got the call. I failed to be lined up. I'm going to apologize in advance. Unlike my brother from another mother here, he wrote his whole thing out. I was, you know, watching it. I do... I'm a keyword kind of guy, so I kind of riff. So bear with me. Madison knows what I'm talking about. This could get long. All right, so I have a few points to make about my feelings on this issue. It's no shock to anyone that I am a shareholder. And so I don't think I need to argue or convince anybody what my position is on this. But I will argue what I believe are, in my opinion, the right things for us to do as a council. Like Counselor Afghan mentioned, I'm going to be a little stronger in my words. I take great offense to the opponents of this measure, weaponizing racial guilt and classism to get their point across. This is not a race issue. This is not a war against those who are wealthy. This is a war against a community. And I feel like those who use false racial narratives to get to win an argument just means they don't have rational arguments to win an argument. So I would just ask that our council recognize that and realize what this issue is really about. I believe the plaintiffs have done nothing more than to, for 12 years, attempt to divide our community. I think it's interesting that neither plaintiffs chose to speak tonight. I think it's interesting that the plaintiffs are requesting significant amounts of money in payback for legal fees, when it was my understanding they were getting free legal advice from Lewis and Clark Law School. To me, this is a private property issue. And what is happening now to me as a... I'm not a philosopher, Ms. Anne, but I do appreciate a little history. This, to me, is private property redistribution. For those that argue that the city needs to stop investing all this money in the lawsuit, I'm going to be real with you. We've spent a significant amount of money over the last 12 years on defending and protecting the lake and the city. If you break that down in an annual cost, it is about $70,000 a year. We spend more on our electric landscaping equipment for the city. That's $70,000 a year to do this. So when people argue that their taxpayer... Their tax money is being wasted, just think about that. Today, it's about the lake. Tomorrow, it could be about your backyard. It could be about your backyard if you don't live on the lake. So what is politically, you know... What political lightning rod is today that you're in favor for? We all know how this goes. Tomorrow, it could be something that you're vehemently against. So it's a slippery slope what we're dealing with here. I'm a big loyalty guy. I believe that our words have meanings. And I truly believe that if we make promises, we need to hold those promises. And I urge the council here... The Lake Corp has mentioned the promises that some of us made to Lake Corp to get their endorsements. That's pretty... You know, I know what I said to Lake Corp, and I stand by that, what I said. And I think we all need to understand that as... Yes, we're politicians. And politician has a negative derogatory kind of vibe to it. I get it. I get emails, too. But if we could all be the politicians that we wanted to be when we ran for office and not the politicians that maybe, you know, four years of the shitty emails we get has turned us into a little bit, let's remember what we're really here for. We're here to represent a community of 40-something thousand people. And what we have all heard over emails and tonight is the majority of people want us to appeal this decision. And like pickleball... And unlike pickleball... Unlike pickleball, I really hope that we listen to the community on this one. I'm only laughing because he and I were the only ones that were trying to, like, keep pickleball, so. pickleball, so. You were too, no, sorry, yeah. So this decision's going to impact our city for decades. And this is going to be another strong comment from Mr. Raf here, but I will not be one of the councilors that destroys this city. And so I just urge all of our, the rest of my, my councilors here, that we need, requesting or notifying for the appeal doesn't mean we're going to appeal, but it preserves our options. And what Ali also mentioned in his, in his talk was, we don't know what this is going to mean, and we need the time to do our due diligence to bring the right stakeholders to the table to figure out what that looks like. And the judge has not given us that time, and we need the time to do it right. Because if we do it wrong, we have one chance to mess this up. And so I just urge us all to make the right decision, and that would be, in my opinion, is to continue with the appeal. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Councilor Raf. I do have a question for Ms. Osneck. You guys, you've been doing so well. You've been doing so well. Let's not go downhill now. Ms. Osneck, you know, one of the big things we've been hearing from folks is that, who have asked us to appeal, is not necessarily because there's a great legal basis for an appeal, but they want more time, you know, more time for the city to withdraw that from a lot of comments tonight. It's kind of universal, right? More time for the city, the Lake Corporation, for stakeholders to work through regulations and kind of put a plan into place, so to speak. Now, the council offline has received comprehensive legal analysis from our team, which we're grateful for. Ms. Osneck, can you kind of share with us, as our city attorney, your opinion of the likelihood that if the council appealed, we would be granted that stay?
Yeah, and just for the benefit of the public, I'll repeat the question, which is, Mayor Buck would like my opinion as the city attorney as to whether or not I think that the Court of Appeals would be likely to grant a stay, which is just the legal term for delaying the effectiveness of the judgment that Judge Steele rendered. Mayor Buck is asking my opinion about the likelihood that the Court of Appeal would grant a stay, thus making the issue of immediate access not, not something that would come into play right away. So I thank you for the question. You know, I think I'll start because I can feel Mr. Edelson's eyes bearing into me, and I believe there are other attorneys in this room. I probably should ask for a show of hands because, you know, reasonable minds, reasonable legal minds can certainly disagree on this point. But I think it's important for me to claim my own seat at the table, which is that I have been the city attorney for Lake Oswego for two years. I'm deeply involved in the litigation. I have studied it, as many of you have. Many of you have lived it, others of you have studied it. I think our professor that was here. And so, but my own opinion is well-informed on this subject. And the reasonable legal minds can disagree. It is my strong opinion that the likelihood of the city being able to get a stay on the issue of the judge's determination that the city's rule is unenforceable is very low. And there are a number of reasons for that, and I know I shared those with some of you. But the legal bases for that opinion primarily are that, as Mr. Edelson was pointing out, that we have probably a respectful disagreement perhaps about the outcome, that there are two issues on an appeal. One is, is the factual determination that the advisory jury and the judge made, is it supported by the record? And then the second part of an appeal, as again, Mr. Edelson was suggesting, is whether or not the remedy that was imposed is within the court's authority. And because the issue of access, as I think even Mr. Edelson suggested in his comments, was heavily litigated by the city, and in an appeal on a factual determination, that's a very difficult and challenging bar. And so it's my opinion that the likelihood of success on an appeal, just on that very narrow issue, that there would be substantial challenges. And one of the issues in getting a stay of a particular element of a court case, this would be as regard to remedies, is the likelihood of success on the merits and whether or not that the party can show that there will be substantial harm. Again, those aren't the exact legal terminologies, but that's the, right? Can we succeed on the argument we're making? And if we do succeed, will harm result if the judgment isn't stopped? And so I've given you my opinion as to the first on the access issue, which is my opinion is that it would be challenging, not impossible, but challenging. And because of that fact, the court would be unlikely to grant a stay, even if there would be, we could show that there would be substantial harm from the judgment going into effect and immediate access at Lower Millennium being granted, that I think there would be extreme difficulty in the first part of the test. So for those reasons, I think that it's unlikely that the, that the city would be able to get a stay.
Thank you, Ms. Osneck. I'm sorry to put you on the hot seat there. But it's important information, it's something that was really impactful to me to hear because it is such a prevailing comment that we hear from folks, that they really would just like more time. And now the judge's current ruling is in effect right now, right? And over, since Resolution 1212, which is the council's past resolution, kind of barring access at Lower Millennium has been in place, is that, have we ever enforced on Resolution 1212? That's a question for Ms. Bennet. It's challenging.
No, it's very difficult to enforce because it essentially would require us to catch someone in the act of either getting into the lake or, or launching a boat from Lower Millennium. I will say, I do believe it has deterred people because they, they look in advance and they check. Most people are like the kayaker who spoke tonight. They want to follow the rules, they check in advance, and then they just don't come.
People do want to follow the rules, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Bennet. Thank you for answering those questions. All right, colleagues, Councilwoman.
What?
Oh, please, go ahead. No, no one, everyone's so freaking quiet. Yeah, let's go. Let's go. I'm going to start calling up people.
Does my button work?
Yes, you're up.
Great. Well, like my two other colleagues, I'll talk for a little bit, since no one else is. First, I want to thank everybody for participating in this evening, for you to come out on a spring day that is a beautiful day in Oregon at 46 degrees. I know you have lots of other things you'd rather be doing. I'd like to thank the community members who wrote us, who called us, who shared with us their thoughts and ideas. I've been on council for seven years, and I've always found it extremely helpful to have input from everyone. Your communications and calls were passionate, thoughtful, mostly reflective. But I think as it continued down the timeframe, many of the critical issues were brought forward, and you got a lot more refined in your commentary. And so just commentary trend, sort of later, it elevated very highly. So congratulations to all of you. I think Lake Oswego is facing, once again, we have to decide on an issue which brings differing opinions, differing thoughts. Most often, our community with different perspectives comes together and unifies around each issue. This issue, the public lake access, has been around for a very long time. Lake access has been litigated during, it was during my eight years on the school board and my seven years on city council, and that's a long time. It's very complex, this issue. Has been through several appeals, all kinds of different courts. And I think the most recent court order we've received regarding litigation over public park access to Lake Oswego, well, it just doesn't sit well for me for a variety of reasons. Less over the access issue, because I think that is an issue that we are struggling with, but rather how the order was written and the implications for the future. So let me explain. First thing I have is the subject of home rule, local home rule. This and past Lake Oswego city councilors, of this locally elected volunteers that sit at this dais, have stepped up over the years. In fact, we had our previous mayor testify, who has, who served for eight years. And the, what they do as volunteers, they're serving our community. We all do it out of respect and appreciation for this community that we love. Obviously, you all care about our community that we live in. Under local control, we have helped build this community into what I call a highly desirable place to live, work, and play. Under local control, we've helped develop downtown projects like Lakeview Village, the Windward, City Hall, the building you're sitting in, the Beacon, what will be the North Anchor with the new hotel and apartments. Under local control, we're building with our partners at the school district, an absolutely fabulous Lake Oswego Recreation Aquatic Center, which rumor has it is going to open up at the end of April. We keep waiting, but it will get open. We've upgraded and improved Boone's Ferry. We built a city operations center. Under local control, we've built new parks, we've improved others, we've made ordinances and city code that has benefited our community. And we did it all with home rule. We did it as Lake Oswego. Local leaders, local community input, local decision-making. We controlled our own destiny. We are where we are today because of an engaged local community who, with local city government, had a collective vision and jointly executed that vision. So I reviewed this court order, and I view it philosophically as taking local control out of our hands and even restricts us from doing things in the future with new park plans and new park developments. Under this court order, we're going to have to spend money, which was never budgeted, and will displace other park projects the community has deemed more important. This court order mandates something that has never been part of our city comprehensive plan, never been part of the, what I would call the massive engagement from our community. This was from an individual, a couple individuals, and most of the money that was spent all came from the outside of Lake Oswego. So it's not ours, our project. It even mandates changes to Millennium Park, which, where are we going to come up with money for that? In one fell swoop of a court order, we're going to go from home community rule to outsiders determining our future. That does not set well with me. The second thing that doesn't sit well with me is the part of the court order about property rights. My colleagues talked about it. What a debacle. How does a state own the water but does not own the land surrounding it or the actual land the water sits on? How do you manage that? Who manages that? And what has been, a private lake is now accessible just because there is a public park next to it? That wasn't our idea. I completely understand lakes and bodies of water that are public. Lamont, Columbia Lakes, they have public land under them, and the banks are public, and so is the water. But that's not our situation. There's not enough clarity in this court order to tell us who's going to be responsible for what. Well, the state of Oregon, well, we can all debate that, but they have problems managing just about everything they touch. Look at homelessness, that's out of control. Look at public education results. We're at the bottom of the list. Look at state mandated housing production laws that had no local input, like the eight houses now that are going on the same lot, that had one house in first edition with no parking requirements. Look at the lack of vision and money for a state transportation plan. Do you really think the state of Oregon will even care about Lake Oswego or taking care of it? I don't think so. That doesn't sit well with me. The last item, I was told to keep it shorter tonight by my family because I go on for a long time, but I'll spare you. The last item I'm going to share that doesn't sit well is the total lack of concern and respect for the city of Lake Oswego and the Lake Corp to implement the order. Apparently, as defendants in this case, and we have plenty of lawyers that can back me up, we were not even allowed to contribute input to the court, which is customary when issuing a court order. We wrote up a whole bunch of stuff, the Lake Corp wrote up a whole bunch of stuff, we all submitted it, totally ignored. Our, the defendants. Well, it may be simple for a judge to write a decree, but it's very complicated and complex to take all the affected parties and people and come up with reasonable action plans to implement, especially with city, state, and federal government regulations involved. We are given 120 days. We can't even figure out where to put a stop sign in 120 days, yet alone figure out what to do with the lake. We're told by our city management that it can't be done correctly in that time period, and I believe them. We asked for more time from the judge. What happened? It was denied. So I have a problem with fairness and process. So where does that leave us? We can't comply in time. We've had some home rule taken from us, and there are questionable property grabs and rights and responsibilities to be sorted out. The simple answer is to appeal just on the principle of fair process, regardless of what our city attorney says, whether we can win or not. I think we're getting screwed, and I think we just need to appeal for that part. The judge even referenced throughout the trial, I don't know if you watched the trial, I watched a lot of the trial, she even referenced that the trial for both parties, that she knew that we would all appeal because there were some bad decisions that were made. At the very least, and it costs us nothing to do it, we should be filing a notice of the right to appeal. If we don't have the right to appeal, it remains an option that we have to navigate through this court order. And if we don't do it, we're not going to have that chance, we're going to lose it forever. So stewards of the public trust, I think is both physically and ethically the responsible action for this council to take. I think we need to support Resolution 2516 and appeal. And if not, we have to at least file a notice of the right to appeal until we get this stuff sorted out. So that's where I sit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, you guys, come on. Guys, again, you're doing so well, doing so well with Tom Clapham. Okay, it's Councilor Corrigan, please, go ahead.
Yeah, here we go. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for all your input, your thoughtful comments, and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails. And I've read every one of them. And what was remarkable to me was the, they came, really came from 360 degrees. It was really remarkable. But for the most part, they broke down along two lines, and you can probably guess. And that is the 25 to probably 33% of you who are the really lucky people, or the people who were darn hard for it to have lake access. And then there are the people, which, you know, that would be the other side, 67 to 75% of our community, who don't have lake access. So I think that's what we're dealing with. I respect and appreciate the absolutely amazing stewardship that the Lake Oswego Corporation has provided for this lake for decades. It's a remarkable place, thanks to you. At the same time, I respect the two-thirds who are asking us not to spend their tax money that could be spent for other things that would benefit them, and certainly, please not spend their tax money to prevent their access to the lake. That's really hard. I mean, how am I supposed to do that to two-thirds of the people? Then back on the other side, the home rule issue is for real, there's no question about that. That's very, very important. And I don't discount any of my colleagues' concerns. They're, they're real, and they're well-considered, and they've been thinking about them hard and for a long time. The commonality we have is everybody here is concerned about safety for the people and for the environmental health of the lake. And in that way, we all sink or swim together, depending on how the lake is cared for. And that's something that I can't see sitting here right now. I do know that the city of Lake Oswego has never had any jurisdiction over the lake itself. We've had the Lake Corp, which has done it. We've had the Lake Corp., which has done an absolutely fantastic job. So I'm glad we're talking about it, we're deliberating about it. I think we're also, the other thing I'd like to point out to everybody here today, if you're not aware of it, is we have an incredibly competent city manager who has dealt with things you wouldn't even believe, ski areas, I mean, all kinds of things. And I'd like to point out, and you probably all know, that we do have lakes on the, on the river, not lakes on the river, I'm sorry, parks on the river that are very successful, and they, they seem to be working. We've done it for a while, and we've done it well. And I guess I'm, I'm like my colleagues, I just hate to see how this has divided our community. We really are a welcoming community. I've seen it again and again and again. And I think that we should be able to find a way to work together to work this through. That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you, Counselor Corrigan. Counselor.
Good evening, everybody. I, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, all of you who come here to listen to us and to talk as a community. I am not a politician, as you say. I am an educator and an activist father, that's me, an immigrant, a proud immigrant. Before I delve into the situation, I would like to respond to a question. When I was running for council, I've been invited by many people. And at that time, with the knowledge I have, I responded very honestly. I consider myself to be a very honest person, straightforward, a community member, and not afraid of anything or anybody. So when I was invited with the lake, I always consider, and people who know me, I'm a kid of the ocean, I, for me, this, I will never swim on this lake, honestly, it's because I don't consider it as a big body of water that would make me, I always, I'm very shocked to see like the whole, the big thing about the lake, you know, and, you know, when I was asked what I think, I said, I think if you have an open access to all the lake, it can create a big-time problem, you know? And I believed in that, and I really believe in that, that it can be a big problem, you know? It's a very small body of water. But today, I'm addressing people because, you know, there's a dynamic on people's belief and faith, because you always judge things with the information you have at the moment. Like, I'm being very honest and very clear, I would not encourage us to continue to appeal the case, and I'm going to say why. First, I was elected, and you know, I'm the first black person elected by this city since its creation, and I was elected by the number of vote that nobody has ever had. So I don't think that I was elected by some people versus other, and no one but my candidacy to be their puppet or to favor them. And it will never happen. I will never work for anybody. I am the only one, the rare people in this room who could say that I became an American not by force but by my willing. Most of you were born and raised here, you had no choice. I had. My choice is to become, so I vote for America, I vote for Lake Oswego, not for a group or for any party. And today, I was elected by you to be a steward of this city. This city has outside counsel. They told me, if you appeal, you're going to lose. The city has an attorney. I talked to everybody, they told me, it's not worth pursuing, you are going to lose. The public doctrine, that Judge Lineinger, I was in Italy when it happened. I was, the mayor gave me the information, and I say, whoa, what was her things? And we came, the same moment when we were talking, that they told us, if you appeal, you're going to lose. You don't have, we, we are going to appeal because we believe that the people on the lake, they are people of Lake Oswego. We were fighting for them because we thought we had real things, real chance, and I don't indulge in division, in us versus them. I don't go over there. I will never weaponize race or anything. I am not a DEI hired. Everywhere I go, most of the time, I am part of the most people who are, deserve to be there. I deserve to be here. I was elected by the most vote last time, and the, the first time and the last time around. So I was, I'm not a DEI. Education-wise, I studied and get the highest degrees that America gives to people. So I will never be, I don't believe in that. I believe in fact, and in what government should do is face the truth. It's anyone who lives on the lake. You bought your home, you fight all your life. My friend has a home there. No one can come and say that Aaron is racist or is this, no, he worked hard, had his home. And when they come and tell him, no, it's no longer private, it's normal that he feels a certain way, but it doesn't mean that because he feels that way, we have to go with them. No, we go with them, like I said previously. Those are the reason why I think we should not go. But the other thing that I have seen in this community, and you take it or you don't, I am just a community leader, I believe that shame on us if we sit here shooting at each other on things that most of us, we don't, I read most of, and I'm being honest, I read all the emails that were sent, they were almost a thousand. I was reading from Portland to, to Washington, my, on my way there and on my way back, and every night till midnight, and everything, even in the, I, I read, I read the last one that was sent even before we start the meeting. But all, most of you agree that, oh, the lake access will be possible, but we need to work on safety. We need to work on people being in their home and should feel safe. How do we do that? And that's what many people here come and say, like, what we should do, work together as a community, not that we are coming to, to rub it in the face. It's a public, I do whatever I want. It will never happen in Lake Oswego. Lake Oswego, first of all, people should know, we have no jurisdiction on the water. The Marine Board does, the state of Oregon, the county. But on crime, our police has jurisdiction everywhere in Lake Oswego. Anywhere crime is committed, we can go there. So we will, what our job should be is, we defend our people who are, who live on the lake, like we defend everyone that live on the street. Sometimes people call us and say, on their street, they go 80 miles, on a 25 miles, and we, our police go there. The same thing, if people are going into people's home, property on the lake, and do think that's not normal, they will tell us. And that's what we are going to do. So for me, the debate is not whether, like, oh, nobody is winning. The lake is a metaphor of unity. For me, that's how I see it. We should see the lake as an asset. If we lose it, everybody will lose. It's not only, I have my home in Lake Oswego, I work also, when, when people, I work very hard to buy a home. And like the gentleman said, some time ago, I was not allowed to even stay in Lake Oswego list to buy a home. Now I own a home. So Lake Oswego cannot be seen as the past. Lake Oswego should be seen as now and moving forward. We cannot go back. It's not what we should be here for. We have to leave this meeting, knowing that those who have their home on the lake are citizens that have, that deserve respect, that have the right to be afraid of this decision and to, but those also who live outside, the two-thirds, 75%, they also have the right to go through this small part of Lake Oswego. If you follow the things, the lawsuit was, the plaintiff, the plaintiff were asking for everything. The plaintiff didn't get everything. Sandler Leaf and Headley, they wanted access there. What if the judge said that, hey, they're going to have access there? It would be, it would have been very difficult and more complex than it is now. And the thing shouldn't be, they won, we lose. They didn't win. I don't think that Kramer and Prege won it, it the way it is. No, they didn't. The judge made her decision based on also an advisory jury, who told them that it was not, what we believe, all of us, that it was dangerous to go there, that they will bring environmental disasters, invasive species in there. That jury said, no, it doesn't hold. You guys have to remove what you did on 1212. And that's what we hear. We were fighting because people before us made that decision, and we believe that those people were good people, that thought something that this is what we should do to protect the lake. But a judgment came and said, it doesn't hold. We are Republicans. We should abide by the law. The Lake Corporation has their thing. First of all, why is it us? The lake already appealed. So if you appeal, if you think that appeal will make things slow down or, we asked for the judge to give us more time, she refused. But I talked to our workers, I talked to our staff, they told me, no, we are going to do what we can do. No one is going to come and tell us, hey, why you didn't do it in 90 days? It's not going to happen. We are going to do the, what we can do to respect the ruling of the court. The rest, let's get together and make this thing work for all of us. If we don't do it, there will be losers and winners, which is not good for our community. We have to work together, that's all that I have to say tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Counselor.
Okay, there we go. So I too would like to thank everyone who participated in this process. This, as we've talked about, it's not easy. This is not an easy decision, there's a lot of emotion, rightfully so. But I really do appreciate everyone who emailed us to share your opinion, especially those who actually were helping, trying to give solutions and giving more detailed accounts and not just a cut and paste. I really did appreciate all of you who went and made that extra effort, and for those of you who came to speak tonight, because that's never easy to get up here in front of people and do that. So thank you very much for being part of this process. I also appreciate those who called me, and we had conversations, who spoke to me. And finally, the Lake Corp., because I remember the days of swimming in the lake, and you would kind of be green when you came out. And they've done such a phenomenal job of making the lake clean, and that was not, you know, that was the effort of, you know, everyone who lives on the, the lake, everyone with easements, you know, everyone was paying in to make the lake clean and beautiful. So I think we, we do have a very precious commodity that we need to take care of. I think, you know, we heard a theme going through, and that's safety and, you know, environmental concerns, and what can we do? How can we make this safe? How can we make sure that the lake is protected? And unfortunately, we still have a lot of questions, without doubt. We still have a lot of issues that need to be worked out. Some of those issues, the city has more control over than other issues. I think many believe that we have a lot more control than what we really do. But I think we need to do everything we can as a city to make sure that we have, you know, that we have safe access, if we, you know, can support Lake Corp. on anything in terms of working with the Marine Board and the state, I think we need to do that. But as my colleagues and our city attorney has shared, you know, it, getting a stay, which is, I think, what most people are wanting, is a stay, which would then buy us more time without allowing people on the lake, it's very, very unlikely to happen. And an appeal is unlikely to, you know, we're unlikely to win, and that would be a lot of more time and resources from our community that we could put other places. With that said, you know, I don't say this lightly, because we have many members of our community who, they purchased something, they purchased their home, which is one of the most treasured and valued things that people work extremely hard for, and under a certain understanding, which was that they have a private lake. And the courts disagreed with that. You know, right or wrong, I'm not going to get into that part of the decision. They decided that it was public. I've done a lot of research in the last four years, and, you know, I have my own opinions about that, but regardless, it's, it's, the courts have come and decided that the state owns the water. They've decided, you know, I, I do believe that in phase one, the judge was overreaching in how she defined that, that, you know, but basically, all water in the lake should be considered public. You know, I do believe, especially with the bay, it was a marsh, that was not a navigable piece at the time. But we weren't part of that phase as a city. That was not, you know, we, we said that's between the Lake Corp. and the plaintiff, and the judges ruled. So we have to then step back and say, okay, phase two, where are we at? What does this look like? And that's around the park access. And it doesn't, you know, it frustrates me because I have some definitely similar concerns from the home rule, as, you know, Counselor Wenland pointed out, but I take a slightly different view. I'm just, you know, I'm hearing that it doesn't make sense for us to move forward and that we're not going to win. So I think we need to be thoughtful about our, all of our constituents and how we use those funds. And I think we need to focus on how can we, as a community, come together, work together, and do everything we can to ensure that we have a safe place for people to access the lake, do everything we can to support and ensure that we have safety on the lake, that we make sure that people who are using the lake understand that this is the only public access point, that you can come and go, to be respectful of the environment, as well as everyone who lives around the lake. And I believe we can get there. I, I too, in the ideal situation, we'd have more time to work these issues out, but, you know, the judge has said it's now and it's open, so that's where we're at. So I really do hope we can come together. I've talked with people in other states and other locations that have actually very similar situations, and they've made it work, and I believe that we can make it work. And I also would like to say, I think most people who are going to come and want to use our lake, want to recreate on the lake, they are responsible. And I think we need to remember, as Counselor Afghan said, I think most people on all sides, they're good people. We're good people. They want to follow rules, they don't want to be reckless, they don't want to get hurt, and they don't want to hurt somebody else. So we just need to do everything we can to make sure everyone knows how that can happen. So again, thank you to everyone for participating. I hope you continue to be part of the dialogue, and it's, it's not a fun decision, it's not an easy decision.
Thank you, Counselor Verdict. There's a, you know, in any lawsuit, there's always the matter of, there's, there's a winning party, there's a losing party, and there's the matter of the attorney's fees. And this has been a narrative floated out there, that if we do not appeal, that we're losing our rights in, in regards to contesting the attorney's fees. And I just want to give the city attorney an opportunity to kind of clarify where we stand in regards to that aspect of this matter.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Buck. Again, I'll repeat the question. Mayor Buck's just asking about the process of having a general judgment and then the issue. issue of attorney fees. Um, and so the status of the litigation at this point is we have a general judgment, and so the next step in the process is for, um, the winning party, uh, to file a request or a petition for attorney fees. That has been done, the plaintiffs have filed their requests for attorney fees. And the next step is for all of the defendants, and this has actually been misreported in the press, all of the defendants, plaintiffs have asked to contribute toward their attorney fees. So that means the state of Oregon, the city of Lake Oswego, and the Lake Corporation. All three of the defendants, um, have asked for and were granted more time to respond to this petition, because the plaintiffs have asked for fees dating back to the inception of the case, so twelve years of documentation about their efforts and how much money they believe they're entitled to. Uh, so, um, if the question is, does the city, A, still have the ability to argue about whether or not it should be responsible for attorney fees, and if so, how much? The answer is yes, we still have that ability in the trial court. And then the procedural posture is that once, uh, the trial court Judge Steele makes a decision about attorney fees, she does that in the form of a supplemental judgment, and any party may appeal, um, the, a supplemental judgment awarding attorney fees. Uh, and in this particular case, if the fees were, um, something that the city felt were excessive or unfair, um, we could certainly independently appeal the supplemental judgment imposing attorney fees.
Okay. So that will be a future decision of the city council?
That's correct. That would be a future decision. And to be perfectly clear, once the supplemental judgment is, uh, entered, uh, similar to this decision, uh, the city has thirty days to decide whether or not to appeal.
Okay. Uh, Council Wenland has a question.
I think our attorneys, uh, gave an estimate of what the cost, what they would estimate the cost of appeal would be. Do you know what that is?
I do. I recall what their estimate was. I'm going to try to be a little, um, artful in answering that question, because, um, the, they gave an answer, but the, were we to initiate an appeal on the attorney fees, um, I think there would be some steps.
Not that part. If, if we were to appeal on the merits.
Oh, on the, on the entire case, yes. I think if we were to appeal on that basis, that, um, we actually would want to engage in a, uh, solicitation process. So that's my first answer, is we, we did receive an answer from our outside counsel, spitballing what they thought an appeal would cost. Um, and they estimated in, um, you know, the hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think they actually said they thought, no more than a hundred thousand.
Yeah, no more than a hundred thousand dollars to appeal the case.
That's right. And, you know, but to put the finest of points on it, I mean, it, as they themselves said, it depends dramatically on the scope of the appeal, um, what issues we would appeal. And of course, if we're directed, if you direct me to file an appeal, we will be vigorously arguing on every basis probably, um, that we feel the judgment is appealable. And that really dictates the amount of money. But to directly answer your question, Council Wenland, the, um, you know, when asked, they, they estimated a hundred thousand dollars. And since I am now on the spot, I would say that that is a, a low estimate, and I would, I would say the range.
But it's not another million dollars.
That's correct. It's not in the millions for certain.
Maybe a hundred and twenty. Maybe a hundred and twenty bucks.
Yeah, I would say, you know, let's, uh, a hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But again, that's really speculative.
I bet you I can get checks for that amount tonight.
Give you some cheaper loans, maybe. Okay, uh, Council, do you have a question, Council Afghan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Procedurally, can I ask the city attorney a question?
Sure, yeah, of course.
I believe, based on what I read in the paper, the judge has declined our request for longer duration to comply with the order.
That's correct.
I haven't heard the reason. Do you know the reason? Can you share it with us?
I do. Um, the, the city, uh, because we were quite concerned about our ability to comply with the ninety-day timeline to remove plaques, as well as the hundred-and-twenty-day deadline to remove, uh, boulders and artwork, uh, we sent a letter to the judge, outside counsel did, um, explaining that, um, setting forth the, in a detailed declaration, all of the steps that we felt like were reasonably, that we could anticipate, as well as their time, uh, and sent all of that to the judge. Uh, the plaintiff's counsel, um, objected, uh, to the extension of time. Judge Steele finally wrote back to the parties and said that, um, she believed that she did not have jurisdiction, because the Lake Corp had appealed, uh, the judgment. And so, um, she believed that that divested her of any ability to, um, handle something like that in this case. Uh, we communicated back to the judge that in fact, our, our position was that it was discretionary, that she certainly could, um, grant an extension, uh, but she declined to do that.
Okay, thank you. So she doesn't have jurisdiction, that means if it really takes us six months to do this, it takes us six months to do this?
Uh, that's correct, uh, Councilor Afghan. And for, again, those in the back, Council Afghan is asking me if the trial court is, um, in response to our request for her to amend the judgment, saying that she does not have jurisdiction. Councilor Afghan's question is essentially, then, does that mean that she wouldn't have jurisdiction for, um, some kind of enforcement action against the city if we failed to comply? Uh, or we were unable to comply in a hundred-and-twenty days? And I would have to say the answer to that is uncertain, but my considered opinion is that she probably would be unlikely to take up an enforcement action, even though she may have discretion to do that. Uh, it, it seems that she wants the Court of Appeals to resolve some issues before she takes up any sort of, um, amending of the judgment or enforcement action on the judgment, so.
But we would want to show progress, since this is a judge's order.
Yes.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing I would say is, I don't think it would be right to comply with a court order and also violate other laws.
Right.
So if we need to get permits, for example, to do the work, or if we need to follow a state procurement law, and those processes take us longer than a hundred, I would rather violate the court order than violate Oregon statute.
Right.
And I hope the city attorney would agree with that. So yes, we would show progress, but we would also follow the other laws that will govern this project.
I, I don't know if I have any authority over that, but I hundred percent fully support your position there.
And so the public knows that the city is already taking steps to comply with the judge's order. Um, Council Rafia?
Uh, just a follow-up, uh, to our city attorney. So, uh, Judge Steele is essentially, you know, yeah, washing her hands, stepping away from any further decisions on, on our progress towards complying in the hundred-and-twenty days. However, could another judge, uh, rule and jump in, in the meantime, to force us to comply on time or hold us in contempt? Or could the plaintiffs further, um, for lack of a better word, sue us for not complying? So if Judge Steele is out of it, could another judge step in in the meantime and, and, you know?
Short answer, no, not at the trial court level. It is true that Judge Steele is retiring, and so her spot will be filled by a new person, and that, that will be the assigned trial court judge to the matter. But no trial court judge could intervene in the way that you're suggesting.
No one could hold us in contempt if we don't do this in a hundred-and-twenty, no one.
No, I would say it slightly different. No, no judge will, uh, independently take action at the trial court level to monitor.
What if somebody asks them to?
But that's a more difficult question. If the plaintiffs were to file a, um, you know, a, a motion, uh, attempting to say that, you know, we hadn't complied with the judgment, it, I don't know how a trial court would respond to their request to enforce. I will say this, um, given the fact that plaintiff's counsel made representations to the trial court, that they do not believe that the trial court has jurisdiction to take action on the judgment, it would be somewhat contradictory then, right, to say, but I wanna file an enforcement action, and so we do think you have authority to do that, Judge. You don't have authority to grant an extension, but you do have authority to hold the city in contempt.
So what you're telling me, and you're telling everyone here, is there is no teeth to the judge's order that we comply in a hundred-and-twenty days?
I wouldn't say there's no teeth.
That's what you're saying.
I would say, I would say the trial court is unlikely to enforce the judgment against the city. I can't tell you that the trial court, under some set of circumstances, for example, the one that you just presented, that, that the plaintiff might do it. I can't tell you what, you know, a trial court might decide. There is the issue, however, of when a trial court issues a judgment, and the city or whoever does not appeal that judgment, there is an, you know, an implicit, um, acceptance of the judgment. And so typically, parties want to take action. If they haven't appealed it, they wanna take action to implement the judgment. And there are reasons for that. One could be that you wanna avoid being held in contempt, but there are other reasons in addition to just not wanting to be held in contempt.
Right.
Um, and one of them could be that, uh, for example, in this case, the Lake Corporation has, um, appealed the judgment to the Court of Appeals. So the Court of Appeals will be reviewing the record, um, and, and other, other things. So it may be that if the city doesn't appeal, but the Lake Corporation does appeal, as they have, that the city's actions towards complying with the judgment may be relevant in the Lake Corporation's appeal, either positively or negatively. Similarly, you know, there is the court of public opinion. If you, if you choose not to appeal the verdict, but you, I mean, the, the general judgment, but you also takes no steps to comply with the judgment, um, that's a different form of, of, of resisting the judgment.
Right. Thank you. And, um, but to be clear, we are complying with the judgment, and Ms. Bennett will be sending a progress report to the court at the hundred-and-twenty day. Oh, that's what was reported. Said you're gonna send a progress report.
Yeah, well, not everything that's said in the press is.
You don't say.
A hundred percent accurate.
Really? Kinda hard to believe.
And to, to be fair to Ms. Bennett.
I also didn't say five-foot boats, so.
Yes, right. Uh, to be fair to Ms. Bennett, um, at, at the time that, that she was speaking, um, the, the court, the trial court had not told us, right, that, that it was not going to, that it believed it did not have jurisdiction.
No point in sending them a progress report. Um, well, I think it's, uh, you know, to kinda step back, um, and it brings some, I think it's important to bring attention to why the city's involved in this lawsuit, you know, to begin with. And what my colleagues have mentioned, you know, in the correspondence, we hear it's like, this is the city, whose side is the city on, right? It's the, and, and it's natural to think about sides, I think in the, in the legal context, and political context, of course. And so we hear, you know, is the, is the city on the side of the Lake Corporation, um, behind the, uh, the lake, um, that provides a lot of reasons why the Lake Corporation and predecessor entities, you know, would see the lake, uh, as private. And many folks who, uh, up until this day, you know, have staked their home choice, uh, business investments and other big decisions, you know, on that notion. So, um, those facts certainly aren't lost on me, I don't think they're lost on any of us. Um, and I also understand the plaintiffs, you know, coming and wondering why they couldn't swim or paddle from a public park that butts a lake, when as citizens, really, uh, were accustomed, not just in Oregon, but really being able to do that pretty much anywhere on the planet. Um, but as a city, as a municipal corporation, what we have defended are the decisions that our community made, uh, over decades, to plan our downtown and, and these downtown parks in a very specific way. And we've defended the principle that communities do get to decide how their parks are formed, and that changing, uh, the, the, changing the design, uh, or changing the use without changing the design could be dangerous. Um, but we're here tonight because the facts on the ground, they're not the same as they were years ago. Um, like with anything else, those designs and regulations, they have to comply with the law. When our community, at the time, designed Millennium Park, Sundeleef and Headley Walkway, it did so, with the widely accepted belief that the lake was a private body of water. Um, a, a community of today, with new facts, you may do it differently, right? Um, and you certainly, even in my time, my, my ninth year now on the council, and, um, a decade ago, you did not see the variety of opinions and perspectives we see here today. I think the new diversity of viewpoints on this topic is largely driven by the legal process and the daylighting of information and decisions that now we're all privy to. Certainly, my own perspective has been impacted by new facts, now established matters of law. Uh, now, as it stands, we've learned through a, a long and complicated legal process that the lake is in fact, uh, public. And as a, as a public body, as a city, as a public body, uh, we can't have rules that fully prohibit access with respect, uh, to lower millennium. Like Councilor Boop mentioned, of course, the, the, the judge and jury did find that it was reasonable to have restrictions on entry from Sundeleef and, 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 and Headley Walkway. Um, those properties are not practical or safe for entry. Now, so that's been the city's main concern, is the safety of the entry. And that's a, that's a concern we heard echoed in, in many comments. Uh, but we had to go through a, uh, this process to get there. And so I know there's some that say, well, we spent a lot of money over these years, and some say, well, it's not that much money. But whatever the case, we did have to go through a, a, a long process. And perhaps, you know, a dozen years ago, if cooler heads would have prevailed, folks could have worked together in a different way, but that's not how it worked out. And so we ended up in, in a court of law, and that's often how disagreements, um, get, 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 get worked through. Um, but I think the real challenge of this case, it really isn't any longer the legal questions, you know, concerning the city. It's pretty clear that we own a park that now butts a public body of water, um, and, and it isn't, uh, legal to have a rule that, that blanket prohibits access. And that's, that's clear. Um, we also know that attempting to seek a stay to buy more time, uh, may not be a productive effort. And, uh, our legal counsel that we've received has led me to believe that filing an intent to appeal is really not in the best interest of the community, nor a good use of, of public dollars. At this point, you know, as I like to say, the cat is out of the bag. Folks can enter the lake, um, they are entering the lake, um, well, like they have been entering the lake. And, and it's really imperative that we work collaboratively, um, putting guidelines and practices in place, so that that can be done safely and with respect, uh, to neighbors. I think what's more challenging right now is bringing the community together around this topic. It's really, uh, completely justified, I think, for folks who have purchased homes, uh, believing there'd be a certain limitation to access, regardless of what degree, and who have been part of an organization that's been dedicated to the health and management of the lake, to feel, uh, to a certain degree, that the rug's been pulled out from underneath them. Totally understandable. And for folks on the bay especially, um, I don't think anyone can blame them for wondering what new challenges may arise. And to the, the larger, you know, community who, who lives lakeside now, wondering what kind of law enforcement presence they may see, how it may change, how various events planned, gatherings are managed, I think that, that poses what amounts to a significant change in, in past practice. And there's just no downplaying the significance of the court's decision with that, uh, in that respect. I think it's also very difficult for us to separate this matter strictly as a legal issue, from the reputational interests of the town, and the self-image we have as a community. Um, I join many of us here, uh, maybe, I think all of us here, really, who desire a town that welcomes all, that opens our doors to anyone who wants to live here, visit here, and work here. And it's really challenging, on one hand, to express a desire to be welcome, while the namesake of the town really remains closed to the, to the majority of the people even who, who live here. Um, practically speaking, we've, we've heard from many, many people, um, and certainly there are some who say, you know, I've lived here a long time, and I would love to go for a paddle on the lake. But for the most part, what we've heard from folks is they just don't want our community to be known as the city with a private lake, whose own government spends funds to keep its citizens out. Um, while that narrative is certainly not representative of the city's objective in the trial, I think that nuance is really difficult, if not impossible, to parse in community dialogue. And so for me, having answers through the court process here really represents an opportunity to turn the page on what's been a contentious community issue, and to work together to ensure safe and reasoned public access, connect all of our community through the decisions of the elected officials here, and the collaborative efforts of the residents, uh, to the body of water that can then really be the true heart of the community. And, um, with any significant community change, we tend to hear fears voiced, which is totally natural, since it's unknown, and, uh, the unknown generate, generates uncertainty. Um, but I choose to exist in a community with the assumption that our neighbors are our friends, and that they share a desire for mutual respect and stewardship. We can all empathize with the great change this is for some of our neighbors, at the same time embrace the opportunity it brings, uh, to Lake Oswego's future, and the way that we welcome and embrace everyone in the larger community to come, share both the beauty of our surroundings and, and, um, more importantly, all of us here. Um, so with that, I thank my colleagues, um, again, for your comments. And we have a motion that's been seconded, and, uh, just to reiterate, this is a motion of the city council, um, authorizing the city attorney to appeal the Clackamas County Circuit Court judgment in, um, Kramer and Preger via city of Lake Oswego, and through the state land board, Department of State Lands, and Lake Oswego Corporation. So a, a yes vote authorizes an appeal and a no vote. Um, so it's no appeal. Oh, okay, yes, please. Thank you, Councilor. Oh, sorry, thank you. Uh, quick thing, I just was wondering, um, Lake Corp is appealing phase one?
Correct.
If we pay our attorney. fees, and the Lake Corp wins their appeal, which then would make the lake private again, do we get our attorney's fees back?
No. If we don't appeal the supplemental judgment imposing attorney fees, then much as the thing you're deciding now, we would follow through.
The attorney's fees would go away even though the lake would stay private? We would pay the attorney's fees.
Yes.
Lake Corp wins their appeal. Lake goes back to, you know, the Linegar's or Steele's decision...
Yep, that's right.
Is moot, which would then mean we don't have to allow people through Millennium Plaza.
That's right.
But we are still out the attorney's fees.
That'd be correct, yes.
Whereas if we appealed, we have the chance to wait for the appeal for Lake Corp to go through.
No, because they're too separate.
I understand.
But if it's just on the attorney fee issue...
Right. If we pay the attorney's fees now and Phase 1 gets overruled, Lake, the attorney's fees are gone. The plaintiffs keep those.
That's right.
We don't ever get those back, even though we, they lost.
Yes, that's right. But the decision to appeal the supplemental judgment isn't before you.
Okay. Thank you. Does everyone understand the motion? Yeah? Okay, Ms. Linder, go ahead and call the roll.
Mayor Buck?
No.
Counselor Afghan?
No.
Counselor Boop?
No.
Counselor Wenland?
Yes.
Counselor Verdic?
No.
Counselor Corrigan?
No.
And Counselor Raff?
Yes.
Motion fails 25.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess.
I need to take a bathroom break.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess.
Run, Joe. Run, Joe, run.